I will call the meeting order and I will say that Mrs. Hicks has requested to join by Zoom. She is ill. So, do I have a motion? Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, took five raised hand, with that one. That is why I think that's five of them. Alright, Ms. Hicks, you're approved and welcome to the meeting.
So she has not called in at this time. So, yeah, so I will keep an eye on it, make sure that when she does come in.
Okay.
She's brought it.
So, what I-
John, there's really no point to, I mean, don't want to backtrack thirty minutes from now.
Yeah, we're, she'll pick up before we start, where we are at this point. One of the, the couple of things that I would like to suggest is, we have four topics of discussion tonight. What I would ask is you hold questions on each one until we have finished that section, like on revenue projections and budget assumptions. Let's get Val and Randy and Andrew through that, and at the point I'll call for some questions. Val?
Okay. Um, in your presentation, and we're just going to kind of skip over those first two slides, we've been over all the different funds that we function with, and I don't want to be repetitive and rehearse all that, but I like to put it in there just as a point of reference, so that, you know, when we talk about budget, we're talking about how things flow in six different funds. So, just as a reminder what each one does. Um, our budget policy requires that we give you a proposed budget, um, the second council meeting in March, which will be next Tuesday at this point. So what we accomplished this evening will help us put together that final draft of the budget to present to you next week. Um, overall, not quite as gloomy this year. Um, numbers have been fairly solid this year, and we'll get into those in a few minutes. Meal tax has been trending upward and exceeding our expectations for this year, um, to some degree. Sales and lodging taxes are not as strong, and they're actually just kind of holding their own with a little bit of reduction, and we'll talk a little bit more. Um, I think a lot of that is just a response that consumers are having towards forecasts of the economy, perhaps downturning, and holding back on a lot of retail spending right now. Um, so we are seeing signs of that happening. So for meal tax, we're about ten percent above last year. Um, we're about twenty-nine percent over pre-COVID numbers. Um, I think the ten percent is coming primarily from the inflation cost of eating out, and one of the things that we discovered during COVID was local people, well, we still like to go out to eat, and we still pay to eat out. Um, but I think what we're seeing now is the increased cost of food, um, where restaurants have raised their pricing, and then we're getting our percentage on those increased prices. So I really think that's really where that ten percent is coming from, because in the retail world, we're not seeing that, we're not seeing it in the transient lodging. So, um, lodging tax is about ten percent down from last year. Last year was pretty high as we came back initially from COVID, but it's not trending that way, um, right now, and as I mentioned, retail sales seem to be down a bit. Um, we do expect to meet this year's forecast numbers, um, but for lodging and for sales tax, we're going to project those to be pretty flat, um, this upcoming year. Meal tax, we'll project about a one percent increase. Um, we do have some new restaurants opening. Um, I think that spreads it a little bit, but if you're anything like my family, I don't go out to dinner on Friday or Saturday night to get into a restaurant without waiting for forty-five minutes. Or on Sunday morning, for that matter. So... Move it to the next slide. Um, sales tax is down three percent, leaving that flat. Personal property tax, we expect that to be pretty flat. We're not expecting any big bumps in that revenue there. Real estate taxes, we've seen about a $200,000 increase in our revenue just from the new construction that's gone on. Um, and then about $300,000 is from what we talked about on the fourteen cents per hundred in the sense value for real estate taxes. Um, this is just kind of the numbers on meal tax and projections. As you can see, we're keeping that kind of flat as we move into twenty-four. Our projection is about nine-two, uh, for twenty-two, twenty-three. That may come up a little bit, I don't know, but we're, we're thinking right around nine-point-three on meal tax. So you can kind of mull over all those numbers at your leisure. It's a lot to look at, um, but that's kind of where we are there. And we have the other graph of the lodging, is the next one. Again, you can kind of see where that's fallen from last year, we're at 1.984 for 2022. This year, we're trending right around a million-nine, so it's a pretty good drop for the lodging tax. Not sure what's driving that. I mean, we haven't really had any hotels closed. I don't know if it's lack of interest in what's going on at Tech Football. No, no, but we are not seeing the numbers. Slide. This is the sales tax numbers. Again, you can kind of see that slide, we're projecting that a little flat for next year. Twenty-twenty-two, we did 2.7 million, which was a big jump from the COVID year and even the year before that. It was a huge jump. I'm not sure, um, it may have just been that 2022 was such a strong year for consumers, and this year's just a little more reserved in terms of those numbers. Slide. So we are including, um, a proposed rate increase for water, um, to go on the... The twenty-two is scheduled a rate change to take the first thousand gallons from nine dollars to ten. We've postponed that several years now, so we're proposing that that go into effect this year. We're also proposing a rate change for all gallons over a thousand to eleven dollars per se- or is currently at eleven, and it'll go to twelve. Uh, the estimated increase of revenue for that is about 350,000. The first thousand gallons, that's estimated, the increased revenue is about 120,000. The current rate for which we're purchasing water from the Water Authority is at four dollars and thirteen cents per thousand gallon. So if we're only charging nine or eleven, that doesn't leave us much of a margin for our operating costs, repairs, maintenance, and infrastructure improvement.
If we did fill nine, probably losing money.
Yeah, at the nine. At four thirteen per thousand, yeah.
Alright, Val, let me share the screen so that-
Alright. Uh, the last item on the water and waste is that the Water and Waste Water Committee recommended raising the outside rate, uh, for water from 150% of the inside rates to 200% of our inside rates. That, um, would provide an additional 150,000 dollars. Best we can estimate.
From my understanding, it was that we were not going to be raising the water. I was not going to-
Well, let me, let me, uh, you missed the early part of it. We're going to hold all the questions until she's through this portion, which is revenue projections and budget assumptions, and then you'll have a chance to ask a question later, okay?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Um, we're not proposing any other fee increases. Our projected unassigned fund balance to begin the year is fairly stable. So we made a big, um, allocation of our unassigned fund balance, uh, months ago in our budget amendment, but, um, it is still stable and comfortable at this point. Um, all of the funds except for the cemetery have operating revenues in excess of expenditures to use toward capital expenditures, so that's a positive. One exception that I didn't get a chance to change on here has to do with revenue recovery. Um, and we'll talk a little bit about that when we talk about positions. That is the last slide.
That's the last one, Liz. Any questions?
You're going to go to capital projects?
Can I ask a question, or is that not a-
Do I have?
John, go ahead.
So Valerie, as far as like the, the water increase, uh, this is not going to be obviously forwarded until, you know, we ha- we still have to do, you still have to have a public hearing and everything, right?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I didn't suggest, uh, I know, did I hear incorrectly? Do you say that, uh, we proposed for that increase in the Stormwater Committee? Or is that, I didn't hear what you said, because I don't remember me proposing that increase.
Proposed an increase in just the outside is all we proposed in our-
Oh, okay, got it. I'm sorry, didn't see this by Sean till after.
Yeah, that's all we proposed from our-
Okay, got it. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. The increase that you have in there is something that we agreed to years ago to cover our increase in water. Capital improvements in water.
Yes. The, the rates from the Water Authority-
We had a plan together a few years-
Well, yeah, but that plan went to 2022,
Right.
which ended two years ago. And we've been putting off the last increase from the nine to the ten on the first thousand gallons. We've been putting that increase off. But that rate study finished in 2022. It was projected out for five years.
Would this increase finally meet that? Before COVID, it increased two out of four years. Right, but will this increase pretty much forego any, any other makeup for that capital improvement that Water Authority did?
No, because the rate's going to increase every year.
Right.
Uh, I do remember the rate going out beyond this year. I don't hear it.
Because it was four dollars, because it was four dollars a gallon. But it's four dollars now.
It's four dollars and thirteen cents, and I know it escalates up a little bit every year. So, yeah, there will be future increases as well, because the Water Authority keeps upping its rate for our new plant.
You know, we, is the Enterprise Fund for the water, is that pretty much flush? We're not, I think I heard you guys right, we're not borrowing anything from the general fund?
No, it's fine right now.
Projected as well?
Hmm, we're getting close. We'll talk about that when we get to capital projects.
So what was the original, what the study recommended an increase of how much for a year, for five years?
It varied. Um, I think we started at six per the first thousand gallons and seven per a thousand gallons after the first thousand.
And where did-
And then it kind of went up a dollar every single year, until, uh, the over a thousand hit eleven, and the base hit ten for water. So if we did this, we would be, we'd be where the rate study said we should be on the base, and we'd be adding another dollar beyond the twenty.
Makeup for the past two years.
Would help, yes.
You know, this is Henry and all of you, now this is not general income. This just covers the cost of, of the ports and water and whatever else.
Do operate the water and sewers Enterprise Fund, and I don't know, gravity from those going into anything other than water. Even what we did years ago is, I'll tell you, it'd probably be some good information for new consumers.
Yeah, we could, um, we could put that out there.
Work session, so you see, it just wasn't put out there. There was actually-
We, we've emailed that study to you before, and I think it's saved under the council folder. Uh, very brave, and it just did the rate study for us.
Yeah.
Because I, I think in years past, we were supplementing that four, five, six hundred thousand dollars, even a million dollars a year, our general funds, started moving.
But this, it was a constant, it wasn't a, it was more or less looked at, people who use less, like seniors, single families, uh, that they get more of a break from that increase. So it wasn't something we did in one night, uh, for us to take a look at, but it's good information. Um, the meals tax, are we still under the impression that sixty, seventy percent of our meals tax comes from even, from outside? Outside of town, sorry. Outside of town.
It's kind of a little bit of a guess, because, you know, we definitely draw from the county, we draw from Bradford, Floyd. I would say probably at least half is probably outside of town, because, like I say, you have so many people from the county and Rad- Bradford, Floyd. I think if you're in the newer valley, we're probably the, likely as anywhere to eat.
Yeah. Yeah, we have more choices here probably than a lot of other areas near us, but... Um, I mean, a lot of it's transient, and that was the whole logic behind the meals and the lodging taxes, that it really captures the people that are coming into town, that aren't residents of town, that are using our facilities and our roads and benefiting from all of the things that the town does. So to have that tax paid by people who are actually outside of town really, um, helps cover the cost of the uses that they have when, when they're within town.
Valerie, just, but just to be correct, during COVID, I mean, there were no events, there was nothing going on really, but the town citizens of Christiansburg, I mean, we do most of our restaurant shopping, everything is in the town. So I don't know, the budget, I think during those years during COVID, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't it like we didn't lose much on the meal stocks? Wasn't it just like thirty percent on the second year?
Yeah, we didn't, we liked to eat. We didn't get the, the decline in meal tax that we thought we did. We all like eating out, apparently.
Well, I do love eating out here in Christiansburg, and so, I mean, I know that we all go here, so...
Worst part of COVID, uh, we were probably at fifty percent collection when it started, yes.
Oh, yeah, for about three months, it was pretty terrible.
Well, everything was shut down, including the restaurant.
I mean, we did in, in 2020, you have to look at 2019 to 2020, we did 6.7 million, and normal was 7.2 million. Here before.
Did, did that include the lodging tax?
No.
That was just the meal stocks?
It's a comfortable estimate that at least fifty percent of this revenue comes from transient, which means outside of town.
I would say that's comfortable.
Yeah, because that's always been. Whereas we have people who don't live within town actually paying this tax, so we-
It was a choice too.
Do you think lodging has anything to do with the Blacksburg? You know, they've had a ton of hotels-
It could be.
-in the past few years.
That there's some of our normal hotel stays have moved to Blacksburg. So what, have they built three new hotels?
We got two more coming up.
Yeah.
We got two more coming up, especially a Bradford Hotel opening up.
Yeah, and Bradford opened a new one. So some of it may just be dispersing a little bit.
We did on this, uh, revenue projections and budget. Yeah, alright, well, capital items.
Um, okay, well, we went through, we had to reduce the number of capital projects. We have made some pretty large commitments for projects over, spread over the next two to five years. Um, so we kind of trimmed down any new proposed projects until we can fund and pay for the ones we already have kind of ongoing, and there are plenty that will still need more funding even as ongoing projects. So we trimmed down the capital projects and pushed them out a few more years, because we just don't have the funding for them right now. Um, and the Water and Sewer Fund, again, we cut back a number of projects, um, to just kind of fund where we are right now. We also have the VRA project loan, which is a very low interest loan as a result of the DEP findings. They've, um, offered us a 9.3 million low interest loan, and I meant to check, and I forgot. Do you remember what the interest rate was?
Zero five, zero five, zero.
Zero point five, so half percent. We're looking at adding, and, and when we had our meetings with them, we did discuss adding a couple more projects. I think it was the Screw Project and- The grit removal project, and so that will add some dollars to this. Um, and they said that they would probably be willing to do that, so we would propose that we're going to go ahead and put the fifteen million in bond revenue in the budget, along with fifteen, fifteen million in projects. Obviously, if they don't let us up it to that amount, we would just reduce the budget. But that'll save us from having to do a budget amendment down the road that would have to go through public hearing and newspaper ads and all that stuff, um, which has a cost to it. Um, and we would just reduce these numbers if they didn't agree to loaning us the whole fifteen million. Um, but engineering will have more for you on those projects coming and what the details on all those are. I know they've been over with them, over them with you, um, several times about what the needs are for the plant and all of the things that have to happen there, so, um, and it's a part of that study that was done as to what the priorities in that are, that are coming, so. On Water Fund, um, I'll back up for a second on Water and Sewer Fund. Um, because we do have so many large projects, we're kind of pushing our, our holding fund balance in the Enterprise Fund down quite a bit, uh, which is kind of why we're proposing the water rate increases, uh, because the projects that really need to get done, um, we kind of neglected a lot of infrastructure for some years, and that's starting to catch up with us a little bit. And that's why we've proposed the rate increases that we're proposing, um, because the fund balance is getting pretty low to do the projects that we're proposing happen in the Water and Sewer Fund right now. Um, just when it gets too low, it makes me a little uncomfortable, you know, moving forward for long-term planning.
Hey Valerie, with, uh, with Town Council's approval, we could move money from the general funds to this fund. It said, how much money do we have in the general funds right now that we could possibly use?
I wouldn't recommend doing that right now.
Can you tell me an estimated amount of what we have in the general funds right now?
Well, it depends on whether some of these rate increases are approved or not approved, and what projects stay in the fund, but there's probably right now, based on where we're at in the draft of the budget, probably about one million, one million seven, one million eight.
That is all the money we have in the general fund?
No, that's not all the money we have. That's all the money that would be available.
Even if we had some-
Are you talking about revenues or the, the reserve accounts?
Just the reserve accounts for general funds, yeah.
So for the Stormwater Fund, um, right now, the proposed projects currently exceed available funds, available within the Stormwater Fund, which would require a transfer from the general fund of 778,000 dollars. Uh, most of that cost is coming out of the, um, College Street Drainage Project. There is an additional one and a half million dollars over and above what we committed to the project from the ARPA funds, which is 2.2 million, 2.3 million. Um, so the thought is that we need to really consider that project and what its scope is. Randy, you want to take the rest of that?
Uh, we're still, I guess, in negotiations with one party either in regards to the easement for the channel. Also, as Val mentioned, we're looking at approximately 1.5 billion in cost overruns on that project, uh, just basically due to increased design costs. So some of that's inflation, some of it's, I guess, slightly increasing the design of, of the project, but basically we're looking, like I say, to take that back to the Water and Waste Committee. Um, I guess some possibilities, if you wanted to reduce the project, we could look at just doing the upper stream pension fund, for example, but that's just a possibility. But like I say, we, we do plan on bringing that back to the Water and Waste Committee.
Hey Randy, were you able to, uh, is there any possibility that we can at least, as the county or the town, I mean, the school system, to see if they can at least pay for the, um, for the help over there that the drainage, um, coming from the middle school?
I doubt the school system's going to give us any money for, for stormwater.
Well, but then the county, can the county at least help us with a little bit of money to see? I think when you said that you were talking about the budget, the last time you were talking about this, I don't think that expense was going to be a lot, to at least do like a small fix. It wouldn't be fixing all the problems, but at least it would be something.
That'd have to be approved by the school board if it's schools paying it. By doubt, they would be agreeable to that.
It would be nice to ask them. Can you please at least talk to Craig, um, Craig Meadows about this?
If I get direction from the whole council to do that, I would.
Um, does anybody else feel the same?
Here's, here's what I think, is we can't even get him to give us money for a school resource officer? So getting them to-
No, I think they are going to, Tim, they are gonna, they're discussing it now. I think they're actually gonna plan to put, uh, county, uh, officers in our schools. So they are talking about it.
I didn't say they weren't talking about it, but they, they have said they're not giving us money, and in the end, what they're saying is that they're still not going to give us money, they're just going to do it themselves.
Well, because it's still over $200,000, we don't have to spend in the town.
We, we still have those officers, if they put them in there, so we still have to cover those officers.
We still have them on, on staff anyway. If they're not resource officers, they'll be on the trouble.
I, I understand, but it wouldn't be a spend in the- It wouldn't be a spend in the schools.
Right, and Craig, but anyway, back to, uh, you want, you wanting us to get money. Craig can't make that decision on his board's behalf.
But he can bring it to their coun- to their county supervisors.
We need to be smart and strategic and purposeful. I don't really think that this is a good use of us going to the county and asking for funding. We need to choose when we do that. I wouldn't choose that.
Good. Um, capital approvals?
Um, you were sent a list. It does need some cleaning up. There's been a couple of reductions, and I noticed a few things in there that didn't have an explanation. So I need to clean that up a little bit and send it back out to you later in the week. Um, it's for the most part fine. Um, there was just a couple of things I noticed that there was one or two items in there that we had already cut out of the budget, that were still on that list, um, that didn't get removed from it. Um...
Projects.
Yeah, that list you're looking at right there. Um, there was just a couple of items that need cleaning up on there. There's a couple of things that didn't have an explanation next to it, it was blank, which is not very helpful. So I'll clean that up and send it back out to you again. Um, and then operational wise, Randy, you want to take this thing on Blacksburg Transit?
We have, I guess, the lower- We have, I guess, the lower to fairly large increase from Blacksburg Transit. We're looking at a 24.5% increase in what we currently have in the budget. And that's with, I guess, maybe slight tweaks to service. We are looking at potential reductions in the go-anywhere service. We've mentioned the possibility of maybe eliminating one of the buses to bring that cost down. Obviously, that would have a pretty big impact on the go-anywhere services if we did. That's, that's kind of what the significant increases that we're seeing. That's kind of the type of cuts we're looking at potentially though.
And this, this reduced scenario would, would, would still maintain two buses during the, the AM peak hours and the PM peak hours to, to facilitate people getting to and from work. Would reduce the amount of trips, they would reduce to one bus during the middle of the day is, is, so that, so there would be less availability during the middle of the day, but try to maintain that continuation of service during the peak times during the morning and the afternoons is what, is what this scenario proposes.
This is paying more into local funding requirements, but getting less service out.
Correct.
You know, I just think that with the bus, I know it's a necessity, but here is my concept about this or my idea as far as this goes. I do think that a lot of, I'm not going to say people, but some of the even organizations, I feel like when they are talking about us providing the service, I don't know that it's getting all of the support to all the people at the right places. For example, I, my advice will be to have stops around the town and just look for the ones that are most, like for example, if there are more people that are being picked up on Linden or whatever apartments, that we have several stops there during the day instead of just going to pick up one person or two people. I noticed that with some of the experiences that I have had with people contacting me regarding, regarding the go-anywhere bus, is that even organizations like Head Start is advising the parents to just take the, the bus every day for their kids. So they're using it like a school kind of bus. But yeah, the parents are obviously have to go with the minors. But still, that would be four buses a day, four buses stops. I just think that it may be misused and all these funds can be very well used for more people instead of just helping some people. It can help a lot more people. Are you guys there?
More money?
Yes.
Two bus rides are fewer.
And we still have the, we still have the fixed routes that have the two routes that go around town and provide service every half hour.
So you're trying to provide logic to this explore?
Well, that wouldn't affect the go-anywhere. Is, I guess that was my point.
Explore, golden blue, state completely intact under this scenario and the commuter route is state completely intact under this, which is funny by that. Like Andrew said, the reduction would be during off-peak to the go-anywhere, which I think long-term we've kind of intended to wing people off of anyhow to some degree, although it is still definitely needed because we don't have service literally everywhere in town without the go-anywhere service. They, they have had a lot of increases in their costs. I know they had to pay their bus drivers a significant amount more. Last year, they've had trouble hiring mechanics. I think we're going to contract that service out now.
Randy, is the commuter route still up and running?
No.
No, no, it's two town trawels.
Correct.
But that, that's only for the mall and that only starts in the afternoon.
Yes. But like I say-
Can't commute on that sucker in the morning. None of that. Right.
I do think too that we can also allow other services to be provided, well, we actually provide, allow them to be provided. But like the agency and agent, they also have a bus transportation service that they provide, even if it's within town or Christiansburg. So I think maybe telling people to use somewhat of those other services if they're older people or, you know, people that maybe have disabilities will also help a lot with our budget.
The ones in the blue and the gold?
Correct.
What's, what's the ridership on those? They increase at all?
They have, especially since post-COVID. Yeah, post-COVID, they've really been, the numbers have really been going up where it's more, it's more than go-anywhere. During COVID, the go-anywhere was really, was, was well utilized because-
That's like a taxi service.
Right. Yeah, exactly.
We did this scenario, I'm sorry if you already said it, we do this scenario, does that offset the increase in cost?
It, it would still be the 24%, almost 25% increase even with that service deduction.
But to maintain the services as they currently stand, it was 672,000.
Have to look, kind of alternative and see if the river system could pick it up at a cheaper cost.
Yeah, we're going to speak to them about the possibility, okay? Honestly, it might be kind of too late to do it this, this far along because they'd have, you know, a bunch of buses, things like that.
I think they were taken over by a new organization last year.
They were. They've contracted with an organization that's actually outside of Virginia, but they, they switched from New River Valley Community Services to this new organization.
Okay. Next year.
I could include in the proposed project.
I think it's just a thousand bucks. Be like the old man thing and just, you know, what you look at. And all, some of you have not been on long enough, some of you have been on long enough, that irregardless of what we do, we're still going to get calls and comments from those five or six people that I'm not going to their front door, taking them to the grocery store or whatever it is. But we, we have had basic consumer criticism, I'll put it this way, over, over the last several years, but we're not providing what they perceive we need to provide. And the cost is still, it goes up every year. We started to say 200,000.
Yeah, right around there.
Yeah, 200,000. When they started to say, that's what our annual cost was, 200,000.
The pushback is usually limited, but it's very vocal. All hope has been that COVID sort of threw it off of consistency, providing actual ride to work. I mean, purchase their own vehicle. So I don't know. I don't know. I would like to get at, at least an option from Rattler if it's not too late, if they can match. Something maybe at a decreased cost or the same, I don't know. Me, rather than just saying no, we're not-
To do, but I'm also curious what the threshold is or it becomes more cost-effective for us to provide service ourselves.
I, I doubt it because you would have to have garage facility, you'd have to hire drivers, you'd have to have somebody to manage operationally.
Probably about six, 15 buses.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we could do it for that.
Yeah. And just what BT's going through with their drivers. You don't want that. Trying to recruit, pay, which adds to the, the fund, you know, budget. So.
Volatility and trips and all of that.
And then this is the local share, so it isn't, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to-
Do we get any kind of assistance with those funds?
50% federal.
Yeah, so that's our local match. That's not what it would cost to provide those services. Although there's, CT is getting federal funds to provide those transit services, part of which, you know, comes to Christiansburg.
And just to remind, just to remind the other council members, Blacksburg really doesn't, just from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Randy, Blacksburg town of Blacksburg doesn't pay for any of the transportation, correct, within the town?
That's correct. I think Virginia is also.
And then also, just so you guys know and remind you, the Rattler City actually provides their buses to come to Christiansburg for free and no cost to Christiansburg citizens. And their transportation, I mean, they bring so many people from Rattler City to Christiansburg. All the times those lines, those buses, those red buses come to Christiansburg. And it's just absolutely amazing just to see how, you know, they bring people back and forth from Rattler to Christiansburg.
We want us to leave in the proposed, the 626?
Well, it, it doesn't sound like we have an option. Can we tell them we're only going to pay 570? I mean, is that?
Well, no.
No, so, so we either-
What type of services do you offer?
So, so we either pay 626 or we don't have, we, we don't get access to the service. And, and I'm not anti-public transportation. I think it's a very valuable asset. And if the increase in, in people using it, you know, and if you broke it down per customer in Christiansburg, what are we, what are we paying for that? You know, does it justify 24% increase? You know, that's the number that's, that's hard to fill to swallow is it's a large amount of money to just come out of nowhere and go, you know, anybody that's in business that overnight you raise your price at 24%, you don't look to be in business for long. However, it's a certain, you know, that, that I don't think we should steer away from providing to those people that, again, you know, the cost of gasoline, the cost of keeping, maintaining their car and insurance and everything has increased. So, you know, you back us against the wall, we pay 626, 712 and not be happy about it. But look, as Henry said, the other options for the future. And, and if you can come back, Tim's opinion is if we can find something, when you come back and you go, hey, Rattler Transit said they'll do it for 545, then we look at that before we approve the budget. Is that what you were suggesting? If we can get, if we can get anything, if we get something back in time like fashion. Otherwise, you know, we owe our citizens transportation, is Tim's opinion.
Agreed. I think we do this with this scenario. If Rattler gets back to us and they give you something less, great, it's already in the budget and we just-
My suggestion is that if you are going to decrease services to decrease the cost, you can choose to start early. Someone's have to have it out there that we're having work sessions and we're cutting it. This is what it's going to go to next year. So the patrons know right now it's just not a, no, like most people, they don't, they don't keep up with it. If you have a couple of work sessions and BT puts that in.
You could probably say you might not notice if you're cutting the, a portion of the go-anywhere service because we'd be cutting one of the buses for basically the, the less travel times. So, you know, there'd be an impact there would. Would it be a huge impact? I don't think it would because the way I see it's kind of roughly maybe a 25% reduction in the go-anywhere. But that's kind of, we'll have it that way.
That's for next year. Early. They're asking what we're going to do now. So I heard Tim say keep it going.
I have a question for you first. I cannot re, I cannot get the, the information correctly. I'm, maybe I'm missing something now. Was the pri, was the cost for us to have not the go-anywhere bus, but the other bus where it has the stops?
Yeah, that, that is involved, I mean, that, that's within that, that, that cost.
I would like a breakdown.
I don't have the breakdown.
I would really like a breakdown to find out what does that cause? Because obviously I know that that's a well-used transportation service in the town. And like I was telling you before, I am not against providing the services whatsoever. I just do think that a lot of the stuff that, how I feel is a lot of like Tim Wilson said, we want to get the most for our buck. Not only that, but we want to serve the most people. Because it's not fair just to, you know, not provide the services whatsoever, but obviously provide them and help as most people as we can with the low budget that we have, with the low income that we have from, from taxes and stuff.
Damn, between go-anywhere and explore.
Going to work sessions part of the year, the deuce, obviously the deuce. That's what it's going to be.
Without question.
I like that. When would you like that work session?
It will be, to be determined when that is, but before we make any major moves, cuts or additions, we'll have, back to Kelsey.
I would really like to have not just the breakdown of the transportation services that we provide, but I would also like to know, you know, from the go-anywhere bus, how many people that are actually picked up for location. And if it's the same location every day, what times those are. Because maybe, you know, there's three people that need transportation in the morning and they can, we can have one stop at that location instead of just going doing the go-anywhere bus, you know, several times a day to the same location.
Get that report, we make monthly?
Every other month, yeah.
Every other month, we get that report. So we'll forward that out. I'll say that Andrew just, just copies that stuff.
And we have a copy of that from now on, please, for all the town councilmen.
I just, I just said, John, I'll say that Andrew sends it out when we get them every other month.
That would be awesome. Thank you, sir.
I would think, in the worst case scenario, I would support this until we find out because you obviously want something to put in the budget, right? We can, we can always backtrack if it's less expensive.
And that's kind of what we have in there as a placeholder for now.
Yeah. We didn't, we didn't go the full-
We didn't, yeah, we didn't want to floor the full increase.
33% increase.
Additional 50, 5,000 increase.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Sorry.
Okay. Are we good on this portion of, of everything? We've done, we've done capital items and things, is that correct?
Yes.
Staffing and compensation?
Southern heat position requested and we recommend to purchase these services. Rescue, Rescue is requesting three heat positions to be added. Refunding two, what is the recommendation through revenue recovery? Fire department requested additional firefighter, administrative position. And aquatics requested an additional special events coordinator and an additional custodian. We did not include those in the budget, our draft.
Those what?
Those positions.
The, the fire?
Fire, fire or the aquatics positions.
You know, let me, let me back this up here just a minute since we're into this thing. I don't see why, I mean, he's looking for a clerical position to handle what we're paying two directors, one of them over 100,000, one of them close to 100,000, to do paperwork. Makes no sense. So if he's got a clerical person at 30 or 40 that can do these insurance reports and these claims, I mean, we're freeing up their time to do what they need to do. Now, I don't know what he put in there for the cost of that administrative person, maybe you can tell me that, but I, I would, I, I could see where it's very justified because they're doing the work for two departments. Because right now, Steve Hanks does the reports and the things for fire department and Dustin does the stuff for the rescue squad, which is pretty heavy. And those are pretty two, pretty high-paid salaries and spend most of the time doing paperwork when they could be out on the road running or whatever.
Well, we have somebody in the rescue squad that does that. No, they can't insure. And did we?
No.
Never? We cut it.
Is that-
No, they don't do insurance billings. That's all handled through EMFMC.
But that's only through rescue. We don't do insurance billings through the fire.
No.
But we do have the option to do that through the fire.
Somebody has to prepare the stuff to get to. Somebody has to prepare the stuff to get to the billing company.
What would it take to do that through the fire department?
I know we looked at it a number of years ago and the amount of revenue that could be generated was pretty minimal. Um, but we had some meetings the other day where we discussed looking into that again.
Right, we'll see.
See if it was a possibility.
As Mike is arguing, now you want to add an administrative assistant to do that. So that might be viable either, just to get additional revenue.
I, I did, I did mention that it's a possibility, Chief Hanks is, is additional revenue, we might work at additional officials.
Right.
Administrative assistant with fire and EMS, is that?
I think, I think it would be.
It is, but I don't know that there's that much work on the rescue side.
On the fire side?
On the rescue. Most of their paperwork is, is scheduling, which you really can't turn over to admin.
True.
And, um, billing, which is all handled by EMFMC.
Customers have to be prepared to get them to where they need to go, that's my point. If it's, if it's, if, if we're spending forty, I don't know what the budget per week, spending forty. Freeing up two positions that probably total pay close to two hundred thousand dollars a year to do what we hire them to do. I think the consideration needs to go back in to the administrative assistants.
Could the addition be part-time?
I think between the two departments. In, in my discussion and Curtis, I won't throw you on the bus here. But in my discussion with Billy O in the past, it is, this person working between the two agents.
Yes, sir.
And that's what we discussed in committee that, that last time, was that it would be a joint, the, the person, Chief Hanks is the chief of both departments anyway. So the person does, works for Chief Hanks and works for both departments.
My understanding is they would split their time between the fire department.
Do they, and they would, that would still a full-time posi, a full-time position, not a part-time? That where you're, I think that that amount of work is enough to justify a full-time person?
I can only refer to his, his justification letter. He said was, uh, he requested a full-time administration specialist. This would be split between fire and rescue. As well as doing some radio shop paperwork. He thinks that was a radio shop.
Still like to see the numbers. I know it's, it's always been, it's low if we did insurance recovery for the fire. But anything that would offset the cost of an administrator. And plus I do have some concerns that firefighters be. So I don't think I've ever seen that, uh, other than some administrators ask or system chiefs. Not to me, is this need that we have, we need a, a firefighter or, or start that process?
Yes, sir. His justification for that was to provide a four, four-person engine crew position is the goal.
Yeah.
Um, with our limited daytime help.
Yes.
So we're actually kind of setting ourselves up for a, for an unsafe situation out here on fire.
Yeah, Pete, who's already a full-time position of the town in radio shop, that's available to be that first, first, fourth person, don't you?
I know what his workload, what his schedule is. There are two of them, Brandon, Brandon's also.
So, you know, this, this tells my age on council or how long I've been here, Mike, too. But, you know, when our person was elected, it's projected in twenty twenty, we would have to go to full-time, uh, rescue and fire. Which back then was projected upfront cost of two to three million dollars right off the bat. So, and I see value.
It's probably.
It's a lot higher now. It's doubled that. But, you know, eventually, I would say probably s- sometime during current council's tenure, if, if you're elected to, and, um, during, and you, you choose to be elected. But I almost need to start going in this direction, especially when you hear that a, a potential cause of not having enough volunteers in the day. Deal. And our residents want.
If we're going to go there, we're going to have to.
Yeah, whether they drag us kicking or screaming, that's something that's going to have to, and if we need to sort of piecemeal this in having a firefighter per year.
You're probably looking at increasing tax rate.
Right, I mean, that's going to happen.
At least a half a penny per year for each firefighter that you add.
I still want to get that insurance recovery and what it takes to put that in place for the fire.
Yeah.
Even if it's only twenty thousand or thirty thousand a year, that still can offset some of these costs, which we're going to have to put in place anyway. Um, now, I'm not going to go off on a tangent, but I also like to, a clarification on that insurance recovery too. Can we still collect that from county residents?
Yes, we can, we can, okay.
Not sure how it works or, and I don't know if you know Curtis on, if you respond to something on eighty-one, I know if it's commercial, we already bill for that. But what do we do for just an auto accident or is that available?
I honestly don't know the answer to that. I know on the commercial side, we're trying to bill for hazmat, what we call hazmat recovery or hazmat cleanup. Um, as far as what we can bill for an automobile crash. I think Chief Assistant, I, I don't know, are there parameters in there if it is a DUI-type deal is billable?
I've written the code?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
And, and I don't, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I'm not sure.
There are a couple of provisions for recovery on cost.
Yeah, I can research that and let you know. But is that through state funds that usually run out pretty fast, if my memory serves? With the hazmat, that's a state.
Well, we're actually, we're actually generating a invoice in-house and turning it over to the VA and you're billing the insurance companies, correct?
Well, or whoever, you know, if it was XYZ gasoline truck that fell over, we bill XYZ, they turn it over to their insurance and we get paid by that insurance.
But if we did this insurance recovery, would that, uh, relax you from, or would that eliminate you from having to do this? And now this organization would do it for?
Probably, but there's, there's still, they have to gather their man-hours and engine hours and.
Right.
All that stuff.
So.
Whether, I think, the last time we looked at this, the number of calls that we would make to structure fires was pretty limited. I know you can bill homeowners for structure fires. But most of the calls aren't structure fires. They're accidents on eighty-one or.
Fire alarms.
We have a fee for the fire alarms, right, if we call it there in excess of the number of.
Yes, on fire alarms.
Okay, uh, not to keep going down this road, can we find out more information and, and projected numbers for that to include autos? Because I know a lot of, uh, um, our volunteers' work is on eighty-one and on the street.
Nobody told me, and I think this was kind of a little bit of a rough guess, but I think he was guessing between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand as far as fire revenue recovery.
That's a significant amount if you want to add a firefighter and that's, that's an easy justification for that. Assistant who then can take weight off our treasure in case. Of a, a vow to, uh, on your site elsewhere.
Right now.
Hey, you can collect the money down.
You don't have to.
My motto is always take the money.
So, so I, I hope the, the true truth. General head nod that we will, would, would fund the firefighter and the administrative assistants.
I would like to know why it was not recommended.
By budget, um, uh, Sam tried to avoid going to page fire rescue, to be honest, if we can avoid it, longer the better. So it is going to be about four million additional a year. Now, right now, we're, we're paying probably over a million for revenue recovery for rescue. So we, we pretty, we pretty much are there with rescue at this point.
Rescue, we're close to two million dollars a year funding.
I would support it if we can move in the direction of getting revenue recovery.
I think we could do that, but I don't know that we can do it by.
No, but as long as we're proceeding towards that, and I'm confident in that it'll be set up at least in the next calendar year or fiscal year.
Oh, yeah, probably.
And I would feel more, I would feel comfortable with funding and, and approving these positions now with the, with, uh, the guarantee that they, they'll basically be paid for.
If I'm not mistaken, I think Curtis, you mentioned that not only will this clerical person also take fire and rescue, but they would also do the trucks, the maintenance shop.
The radio.
A lot of group and some of their billings.
There was a comment in his justification letter that they would assist the radio shop. Well, because Chief Hanks actually does, I think he has to handle a lot of billing and paperwork for that, for that department as well.
We're saying, we're giving you a definite, maybe, but don't cut it down on the budget.
We could potentially revisit it as a budget amendment too. It wasn't funded in this budget, so.
Is that, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'll follow a lot of our direction, town council.
That's what I'm saying. What does town council want to do? We hear Mike saying leave them in there and the reasons for it. Me, if we can project that we're going to get, uh, revenue recovery in the next year, I would be fine with putting them in there because I do see the need. Uh, but without it, I'd probably be skeptical on one out of six, so.
How long do you think you could actually hold off? Like, I mean, inevitable to pay, have paid staff, realistically?
We, we've been, uh, like I said, kind of creeping that way for, for years. So, you know, we've added rescue positions, uh, I guess we're up to, are we full-time?
These two bring us to eleven.
Eleven full-time with these two additional, um.
Lot of part-time, lots of part-time.
Next to no volunteer hours compared to, you know, what we used to be. And we used to be all, literally all volunteers.
Fire is more for part-time rather than volunteer.
Fifteen years ago, I guess we didn't have any paid staff on rescue because literally the, the chief was volunteer.
And there's a reason why we moved that direction.
Yes, right.
There's a big reason why we moved to that direction.
I, I, I think that there's some, some hesitant on firefighter possibly. Does your hesitant tell the administrative assistant, knowing the scope of what type of things that this person will be dealing?
I think the administrative assistant is justified. I think the firefighter should be considered if we can, if revenue recovery for the fire.
They have a firefighter position. Important reason.
And I'm going to agree with him, it's hockey.
I think my heartburn is a little bit over the firefighter, but not the administrative. Revenue recovery pays for it. I would be supportive of us having another firefighter.
So you are good with the administrative?
Yeah.
Please put the administrative.
Include it, thought, look at revenue recovery for next year.
We'll fill it. We'll put it in there, we'll fill it. I mean, even if it breaks even, look at the dollars.
Better use of funding.
The, 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 the salaries that we're paying, because Dustin's assistant fire chief or rescue squad chief. So he's got to do that stuff too.
Just clarification, if Chief Hanks says in here, council is favored at this, at this point of putting the admin back in the budget and the firefighter will be looked at based off the insurance or the revenue recovery.
Thank you. Uh, can you tell us?
On this slide, yes. Not on that, not what we are talking about.
Yeah, we, we, we beat the fire department one round.
The horse is in the council, right?
I mentioned the aquatics possessions. Uh, I'll mention that the school resource officers will be reassigned patrol within the police department budget. So it's not really a departmental change. And, uh, we'll seek county council guidance in regards to the tourism revenue. Whether we lead it within the economic development category or whether we move it to a specific, um, departmental budget.
I touch on the aquatics real quick. Um, we have an events coordinator for the town.
Yes, we do. That's part of the reason I cut it.
So are they helping the aquatic center?
Yes.
Okay.
Currently?
Yes.
They, they should be.
All right, well, the, uh.
Because, well, I mean, per, I mean, ding ding ding, personal experience. There was no interlap at all with the aquatic center three years ago or four years ago.
I'm, I'm working on that.
Okay.
So that, and I'm not going to speak for Sam, but I do know that when we voted on it years ago, well, Sam, you, you voted on this, this position, special events coordinator. And when I voted on it, uh, it was presented for the whole town, which means botics. Or any event that's going on in town, even if a citizen wants to put on an event, that's your point. But I think it's sort of gone wayward to where it's only covering one, maybe two departments and it's not just one of them.
Terry doesn't have, I, I think, big requests in regards to events either. She only has three or four events.
But that's, that's what, you know, we expected.
That's, that's what I expect too.
Yeah, okay. Well, you're the town manager.
We've got a special events coordinator and an assistant.
Yes.
So, yeah, we're.
Uh, for the town, for the whole town, not just for park and rec.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
But their house would be in person.
Okay, I see. Are we all good on position?
What about the changes?
Well, the last one, are you looking for guidance on the area?
Right, right now, the tourism money is sitting in economic development, kind of like community support. Um, to go to an agency. Should we keep it in that budget category? Should we shift it to a town departmental budget? And if we shift it to a town departmental budget, do we shift it to administration? Do we shift it to public relations or do we shift it to separate, separate department for that matter?
I suggest you create a tourism director, marketing tourism director for the town. Are those funds are either used for that or we decrease our lodging and we don't collect it from our lodges? Because that was the agreement years ago. It was used, to be used for tourism.
One percent, one percent.
Right. But if we don't use it for tourism, then it needs to go back and we need to decrease that. We have a prime opportunity in not having to generate a revenue stream, but we can create a tourism and marketing manager for the town.
I think it was your, your, your suggestion and maybe Tim's that, uh, if we don't go that route with, that we hire tourism director.
Yeah.
Can you give me the budget figures that you're going to work off of based on a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars?
I'll leave it to Randy. I'll leave it to hundred and, how much?
Hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
How much do we hire the economic person for?
Uh, this is not economic.
Just plus them a hundred and ten for, for the position.
Yeah, yeah, we budgeted, we budgeted a hundred for the, for the position. We budgeted a hundred for the position. That's salary plus, uh, benefits plus, uh, setup computers. Well, I mean, that's, that's, that's for a different discussion, but, but I'm.
I'd like to see that been in there because right now we are exiting, or we have exited.
So have we.
Yeah, we have.
Tourism?
Yes, we have.
We're looking at final decision.
Final decision's been made. We voted to, to give them notes, one-year notes, and we're out.
Up to resume.
Yeah.
So, so.
Well, you can review anytime you want, but we're out of it as of right now.
Exactly.
I think we're going to bring that back up at some point, as far as I understand. Um, that's, but here, here's the thing, if, so, if you're going to go, I mean, just the assumption is if you fund a tourism director, manager, right, that is in-house, that, that by default means we're no longer a part of the agreement with county in the Blacksburg in terms, in terms of tourism funding, right? Which is what you're saying, we al, we've already made a statement and said we're not.
Yeah.
So what I think is going to happen here is you're going to set that person up for failure when that person, whether they're housing parks and rec or economic development or, uh, public information, that, where are they going to turn to to get any of their information? They can't go to a local DMO. They can't use VTC as a resource because they're going to shut that door immediately when it says, sorry, your locality is no longer part of the, this agreement. So they're not going to get any of that help. And personally, I think they're going to get stonewalled when they're looking to do and work on things. So, they're not gonna get any of that help, and personally, I think they're gonna get stonewalled when they're looking to do and work on things, and I think you set that person up for failure that way. Um, so, I, I, I do not...
You're saying, no, no, uh, like, the Virginia tourism won't work with them?
They will, correct, yeah.
I kinda disagree with that, because I think they will have to help us, where it's still part of the county.
That part of their prerogatives and part of their policies, that we will not work with any municipality that has a tourism director?
They will not give marketing or any resources of the sort from Richmond, if, if you're not part of the, the DMO agreement.
There is a ministry project in Richmond that will probably most likely be able to help them. I mean, that's what they are designed for. VML can also support us and everything else. I mean, it's not, this is not the first town that does not have a tourism thing, that they, they are paying to the county to do it.
I don't know what role the DML plays in tourism, since you have... Not much at all.
VML has a lot of information that can give us.
I think this person can act as a tourism and marketing person for the town.
We have a marketing person for the town.
Your public relations, though.
That's marketing underneath it.
Yeah.
I wonder when they... Their position. Well, I just wanna make clear, we are, we have voted exit, and it's...
But the door is not completely closed.
Well, you go to get to anyone.
It is. Casey, Rock.
But we voted to exit.
We are out, actually, but, but why I took it, we've already put them on that, there's some other tensions to withdraw.
So, in the, in twelve months' notice... In other words, you have tourism council funding, or tourism council for us to be part of either, right, that Sam sits on?
That's what I'm saying, well, for law first, there wouldn't be.
Right.
We're still members until July, uh, June thirtieth, unless we decide to, to rescind that letter, and that's, that's a, that's a horse for down the road, 'cause one of the chairs already to come, so we'll be done, we'll be done again.
But it would take official action from the town to rejoin it.
Yes.
There we go.
So, there would be budget allocations, though, if we were to not do that and look to create a position in-house?
Well, we have the money.
We have several.
Hundred fifty thousand already.
Right, what I'm saying is, I think it's, the money goes down the drain when they can't do much.
Casey, and these, and please don't take this as a bad thing, but with you being part of the museum and stuff, and then the tourism renting from the museum, I think you show up staying.
I hope this does come back up for a vote, and if it does, I'm going to abstain, but I'm still, I can still put in my two cents.
Well, Casey, you brought up a lot of acronyms and things, and these are circles you roll in, in your everyday life.
Yes, I see the value in it, that's right.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I don't see the value for the town in continuing participation in this person, so, and creating our own, I do see the value, no?
Do not. That's what it's...
It is, it is.
I haven't, well, we've probably asked this later, but I just feel it's with the conflict.
The conflict of interest? 'Cause tourism is a tenant in a museum property.
That's revenue to the museum.
Would they, are you saying they, they, they're saying they would...
No, I don't know what they would do. I'm just, I'm just trying to not really get to the point.
I mean, he can, I mean, he can, but it's a huge conflict of interest, which loaded him up...
I'm still trying to learn some, but right now, I think at an abundance of caution, that would, might be the perspective I take. Regardless, that's not the point of the conversation, as far as budget allocations go, or, or money well spent, I should say, that's, that's my position.
The guidance, I think, is leaving economic development.
Wherever that goes.
Believe in economic...
Wherever that goes.
At the moment.
Okay, go ahead, Randy.
Good. Uh, we're including a five percent COLA and a two percent merit, annually, the merit, the COLA amounts to seven hundred and sixty-four thousand annually. Uh, the now actually included in the budget's five hundred and seventy-three thousand, and the two percent merit is, uh, annually would be three hundred and five thousand, five hundred. The budget amount is two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one twenty-five. That's because we make those allocations typically in October, so basically three quarters of the year, that's three quarters of those amounts. We do our performance evaluations from July first to June thirtieth every year, and that's why we make our, uh, allocations in October.
All right, I have a question, probably, not this, I'm, I'm, now, we, I've ca, remember correctly, we agreed to offer benefits to retirees, or is, is that money coming?
That, that is included in the current draft of the budget.
Okay.
About the Aflac, did we look into that for our volunteers?
We, we haven't yet, but we've looked.
And that would be, I would think that would be offered for, um, they would be paying the cost of it, so it wouldn't really be a cost to the town, other than the administration cost of signing people up and collecting their money and...
You mean the volunteers would have to pay out of pocket for that?
Yeah. I think that was what they, they were discussing.
I think the intention is the town cover that, if we can.
Just give us a number, so we can make a decision.
Yeah.
What was it?
What's, what's the cost will be, so we can make a competent decision?
Okay.
Good question.
State's looking at seven percent COLA, uh, Blacksburg's doing something similar, does a five percent COLA and two percent step increases, Montgomery County and Radford including a seven percent COLA.
He's not doing a step just for COLA. County's not doing a step just from seven percent.
Just seven percent COLA.
Fair projection, all right.
Does, I mean, does it reflect our areas?
I, I think it does.
I mean, for years, it's been usually a three percent, two to three percent COLA with a two to three percent, uh, merit increase for deserving employees, which gives it five percent across the board. Personally, I think that's fair, however it works, seven percent, past couple, well, it will be this year. What are you proposing, five and two, four, seven percent?
Yes, five and two.
It's been that for a couple of years, so...
Greater than last year?
The Consumer Price Index, I sent you this sheet, was actually increasing, it was a large, a little bit larger increase than that last year, it was eight point six percent for suburban, urban, which is what we're classified as.
Are you looking for guidance, for you?
That's acceptable, just what you know.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's acceptable, put it in the budget.
Yes, just a sign, yes. Let's get to the budget.
All right. This budget's up here, I have...
All right, so, I wanna go home now. Six twenty, six twenty, so I say eight thirty, nine o'clock.
I need to pass new ones, these out to you. I realized just before I came up here that one is missing on here, um, the free clinic is not on the survey that we sent out to you earlier, so it's added on this copy, so we need to give you some new copies.
Or write it in on yours.
Yeah, we can prefer. But it was missing. Um, we did put all of the support applications there, it, the files are too huge to, um, email. Um, so we've put a whole folder out with applications for twenty-three, twenty-four, um, on the town council drive.
Hundred T council, so you should have access to that.
They have multiple new copies right there, or? Yes, these are all new.
I think my biggest concern on this community support...
Throw your other ones out, you don't have to get the free clinic, right?
I think my biggest concern on this community support is like, even some of this, um, community support organizations that apply, that we have no clue what they are about. I know, like, the live, work, eat and grow thing is even from Blacksburg, uh, it's at the middle school over there, I mean, they have done a lot of grants in the past and everything else, I know they made some of the meals for our senior citizens here in the town, but as far as that goes, I, you know, I do have my thoughts about like, the... Uh, Randy, were you able to send the, uh, the applications to us by any chance?
Val just said she stored them under the T drive, under T, Town Council, she said they were too big to email.
Oh, man.
T, T council.
T council.
My concern is, looking at this, there's an awful lot that no request has been received. And I think a few years ago, we went through that, and almost piecemeal through for some of these organizations, where we, we decided, but remember, council, you can always change your mind, as we did, when it...
I think the policy in effect covers that, doesn't it?
Well...
Policy, when we changed it last...
I, I think part of it is, the new policy says that they're eligible for up to ten thousand dollars per year, not to exceed three years in a rolling five-year period. Because of that, a number of the organizations chose not to apply this year.
They're more strategic about it.
So, it's right time when we did it.
So, they're kind of, yeah, there's, there's strategically planning...
Right.
There are three years within the five-year period, because I did get communication from at least three of them, um, that they said, no, we're just not going to apply this year, we'll apply next year.
Val, is the community health center formerly free clinic, is that stuff on here, but also free clinic is on here, two different entities, one entity?
Hmm, I got me, I got my coffee.
I know, I'm sorry. Old version had community health center formerly free clinic with ten thousand dollars, no request.
Okay, well, then you're missing another one. It's not, it's, they're one and the same.
Okay.
I'll go through the list again, but there is one missing, 'cause there's seventeen applications in the folder, and there's only sixteen on that form, and I didn't spot the free clinic one, so that must be not be the one that's missing. But it won't be more than ten thousand, I'll let you know what it's supposed to be. I was trying to do that at the last minute, you know what happens.
Line one out and say, yeah.
Nobody was late.
Pardon me?
Nobody was late.
Nobody was late.
Good, good, good to hear.
Nobody was late. Everybody turned in on time? Some of them were at eleven fifty-five, but see, oh, um, but that's on time.
So, you, I think as we did, it, it, we were accused last year of taking a straw vote, we were not taking straw vote, you all will submit your forms to Val individually, determine at that point?
But you're sending a new now?
Um, why don't I just send you an email, and you can cross out where it says free clinic, and I'll tell you who's missing on that sheet.
Hey, Valerie, I have a...
Seventeen on there.
The Christians for the Institute, they didn't apply, or are they just applying late? Is the day line for the applying, is it done and closed?
Yes, the deadline has passed, so, and they, they did not submit an application this year.
Christians for Institute didn't?
Christians for Institute did not, correct.
That's, uh, okay. You know, I'm kinda stunned that even though we cut down, like, on the, on the payments and stuff, we had different people that applied, too, and there is only, there is only twenty-three thousand dollars less this year that is being requested. I would have thought that it would have been more, but, okay. But it needs to see, like, the, uh, some of this community actions, things, and like that, but I, it seems like they doubled their prices to what they are asking for from us.
Well, and part of that may be them being a little bit more strategic, since we said you can apply for up to ten thousand, but only three years in a five-year period.
Mm-hmm, okay, got it.
I don't know why we're gonna talk a whole lot about this. Y'all can look and decide you want one or zero, that's it.
That's it.
And we just move right on along, 'cause then in two years, you guys can still fall through again, right?
Yes, they can.
Okay.
All right.
Um, so, um, where we're at now, um, would like a little bit more guidance for what you would like us to keep in the proposed. We'll have to hold a public hearing for the water rate increase, the tax increase, um, and for the budget. Um, the tax increase cannot be, the public hearing for the tax increase cannot be held on the same night as the public hearing for the budget, so we'll have to get that scheduled.
If we determine what the tax increase is gonna be, I mean, you've got it at fourteen, I'm buying it leaving it at sixteen, because of inflation and everything, all the other costs going up.
What did you present, council?
That the flat rate would be, right.
Revenue neutral rates.
The revenue neutral rate.
Thirteen point one oh eight five, or something like that.
Right, so we proposed fourteen.
I'm good with that.
Um...
We discussed this at the last meeting and, and gave you numbers. Yeah. Did we not have a discussion, like, that this is what we wanted? Yeah, so we do read for this already, fourteen percent.
Yeah, we haven't advertised it yet.
Okay.
Y'all good there?
Fourteen's good, with me.
All right. My only thought with that is if we're moving towards full-time fire and all that, we're gonna have to start increasing that tax rate to cover that cost, not, we can't absorb it within our current budget. Um...
The thing I would mention, Blacksburg actually leaving your tax rate at twenty-six point... Twenty-one percent, uh, apartment tax increase.
And they go, they're gonna fund water and...
That's Blacksburg, they're going up for water, water...
They're like doubling their water, their water rate, they're like, wow.
Water rate, you're going up to two percent, water rent's are going up.
They're increasing it.
On water rate, too?
Uh, two percent, two percent.
Oh, okay, it'll be good. Um...
As you say, trainings who come in, uh, they're willing to pay that for a couple of years, you know?
Blacksburg can get away with a lot of stuff that we can't get away with. Uh, water rate increase, propose the one fifty, the two hundred percent, a dollar on the first thousand, and a dollar on all additional thousands after that, everybody good with that being in the budget?
So, you're putting the administrative assistant, at least back in the budget for the firefighter rescue?
College Street is probably the biggest, that's the one I'm most concerned about, because we're...
And we'll discuss that our next committee meeting, and, and give y'all a plan.
All right, so you want me to leave that support in there for the proposed budget next week?
Hundred and seven, the one point two B and the two point four is over?
Until you get a, get a firm from us, that there's, that, leave it in, but then you can always, but for now, we, when's our next, do we have it scheduled? The, uh, Water and Waste Committee meeting.
We, we, well, the regular meeting date, we, no, we don't have one scheduled.
Okay.
You definitely don't have one before next week.
Yeah.
No.
But, but I actually was gonna ask you if you'd wanna set something up in next week or so.
Yeah, Johanna, we need to set up a, a Water and Waste Committee meeting, uh, we're not gonna talk, well, let's not discuss it now, but we, you and I get with Randy, send some, keep some proposed dates and times, or...
Yeah, but for now, leave it in the budget as is?
Until we tell you to do something different.
Okay, well, that's just, what'll go in the proposed document, that'll go for public hearing.
Right.
Okay, well, not necessarily. Budget doesn't have to be posted for public hearing. It can wait a week or two after presentation of it next week. I just need to know what you want, kind of, some feedback, so that we're not radically making changes at the, yes, okay, all right, I'll leave it in for now. I think that's it. You know?
Any other questions?
Have it on the table?
We'll set, we'll set more sessions to ask you questions. Ms. Hoss, thank you very much. Sure, hey, I'm a hand, I'm respecting the least.